Close beside the Watchon Mountain, said our school so dear. All our precious years of childhood, we have spent them here. For whatever be our watchword, conquer and prevail. Hail to thee, our alma mater, such plains that would all hail. When across the world we wander, this will be our song. Honor, love, and true devotion, all to hear it all. For whatever be our watchword, conquer and prevail. Hail to thee, our alma mater, such plains that would all hail.
I'd like to call to order the public meeting for December 21st, 2023. Mr. Jones, can you please call the roll?
Bauer?
Here.
Mrs. Boroff?
Here.
Ms. Brody, Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Iani, Ms. Williams, Ms. Winkler?
Here.
Dr. Kolikowski?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here. Board members present, everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first off, we had our executive session. We reviewed personnel, HIB, suspension and detention, and our legal status report. No additions. Superintendent's report, Dr. Mast.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Good evening. I often talk about how fortunate I feel to be the superintendent of Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools. My heart fills each day as I see students thriving with the support of their teachers and one another. But yesterday, my heart broke because of what I saw in one of our schools. I was shocked by the sight of swastikas that were drawn in a bathroom and on a hallway locker at Terrell Middle School. The act of antisemitism is unimaginable in a district where we have worked so hard to cultivate tolerance and diversity. Unthinkable as it is, we must confront it. The Scotch Plains Police Department was contacted, and they are investigating. We began today to have direct conversations with students about what happened here and the gravity of these hateful symbols. We will extend those discussions to the community through our partnerships with the ministerium and Truth Racial Healing and Transformation. It is important that students understand there is nothing abstract about hate, whether it is online or through drawings in a building. Hate does not have to be spoken to get its message across. Antisemitism and all forms of hate make our students feel unwelcome, and that is unacceptable. Fortunately, our message is stronger than hate. Our district is built on mutual respect and support, and making everyone feel like they belong here. We often say at SPF, "All to hear belong." In dark times, we look for silver linings, and there is one here. Middle school is a critical time for social and emotional development. As we talk to Terrell students about what happened at their school, we know our words can penetrate. We also know that making personal connections is one of the most effective ways to learn. That is why I am so grateful to our acting principal at Terrell, Dr. Barry Haynes. He shared how seeing swastikas impacted him, not only as a Jewish person, but as the descendant of a Holocaust survivor, his mother. Interactions like these are what Scotch Plains Fanwood Schools are all about: learning from each other, supporting each other, and understanding where everyone is coming from. My heart fills up again thinking about it, and all of you who make our community diverse and welcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Mr. Jones, business administrators' report.
Yep, just want to briefly touch on enrollment. So our enrollment up year-to-date this year versus last year. So we have our, we officially followed our numbers with the state for the year-over-year comparable, and we're up 134 students versus last year. You know, it's very, we've been fairly stable for the past 15, 20 years, so it's a fairly significant increase. A quick update on the referendum, potential referendum and planning for the future. So just as a reminder, we did a survey for the community. We did some focus groups for the community, and we are continuing to do due diligence into extra space for the school. And as part of that, we are looking at the purchase of a, of a building in Fanwood. And in order to move forward with that, we're conducting deeper due diligence as this look, as it's progressing. And one of those items is on the agenda tonight for approval for environmental, asbestos, and lead testing. And there'll be further due diligence on the building that we want to make sure that it's a viable building for us to purchase before we actually go out to, potentially go out to ask voters. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. For president announcement, the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law has enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education has caused notice to this meeting to be published by the state by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices located at 512 Cedar Street, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. Such notice was also provided in written notice forwarded to the Union County Hawk, Star Ledger, and Township Clerk of Scotch Plains, the Borough Clerk of Fanwood, and the annual notice of regular scheduled meetings as adopted May 9th, 2023. I will now move over to our student rep reports.
So we have a lot, pretty good amount of stuff this week, or this month. But, um, so first is the Pomtonian Food Services. So we had, at our student advisory board meeting, we had the Pomtonian representatives. They came in and they talked to us about all the stuff that they do for us, and like the stuff that they're going to be adding to our lunches. So some of the new features that they're implementing are going to be ordering ahead. So kind of like, like, like a Panera kind of, like where you can order ahead. They're going to be start doing it in our lunchrooms. They have cashless payments, so you can do Apple Pay, stuff like that. They're also doing social media, so that, like, you can stay in the loop, find out what's new, specials of the day. And then they're also going to be having food before and after school. So, cool stuff.
They're also hosting some interesting upcoming events across the district. We have Foods Across America at the high schools and middle schools, which features school lunches from different states. We have Sushi Day at the middle schools in the winter. And we also have Flavors Around the World and the Healthy Lunch, Healthy School Lunch Challenge.
So another thing is the Model UN trip. After we get off, after we come back from the break, we're going to be heading to the Model UN trip at Hershey Lodge from the 4th to the 6th. Last year, we won premier delegation, so we're hoping to do that again. Looking forward to that. And then also, another trip that's coming up in January is the Spanish exchange program. I'm going on it, and I'm super excited. So we're going to be flying into Barcelona on the 10th, and we're going to be there for 11 days. We're going to fly back on the 21st. We have an awesome itinerary that all the Spanish teachers have put together with some great activities. We're going to go to some museums, awesome stuff, and I'm really looking forward to it.
Also, the first week of January back from school, we have our DECO Regionals, which is our business club, and it's hosted at Kane University. Last night, we had our winter choir concert at the high school, which I participated in, and I think it was a success. We had, the high school choir visited the middle schools today. So they visited Terrell and Nettingham, and we performed for the students and recruited new choir members for the future. Last week, our chamber choir performed at the Rotary Club, as well as the ministerium meeting. And some upcoming sports events, we have a wrestling match versus Cranford. We have our girls' basketball team playing Cranford tonight. And then we also have the ice hockey team playing Bridgewater-Raritan. And overall, I think students are very excited for break to start. Last day of school tomorrow, so we're excited.
Yeah, so tomorrow's a half-day, which is a great day for students. We love half-days, so yeah. That's it.
Great. Thank you both. Very great updates. Anybody have questions? All right, we're going to move over to recognition and instructional updates. We do have recognition tonight. So we are going to be thanking someone for their tenure on the board, because tonight is their last meeting. So, Ms. Mitchell, thank you for your service to the communities of Scotch Plains and Fanwood, and all of your contributions. I'm waiting, it's going to come, here it comes. And you're going to be missed very much. So we have a little gift for you.
Hi, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to say?
Wait, there's more.
There is more. I don't know if everybody else has bags, but...
Yeah, I'm like, oh, okay.
This one is made by runner parents.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
Well, not that, what's inside it?
Oh, cool.
Runner strong.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Yeah, I, you know, I just wanted to, Karen, thank you so much. I think it's important to mention that Karen filled a big void in our board when someone had, someone had left, and Karen was one of the few people kind enough to volunteer themselves to get us through, and then got voted on after that. And your, your outlook and your lens is a very unique one, and will be swirly must.
You're going to have to pass your drop-off warnings. Somebody else is going to have to be the...
Like, stop emailing the board about the drop-off warnings, yeah.
I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed being on the board with you, and I, I agree with Amy when she was talking about your lens. You had very insightful comments and questions, and, and I just appreciated your collegiality and the opportunity to work together.
I'd like to say that it has been such a pleasure serving on the board with you. You bring a perspective that, that wasn't prevalent in all of our, our meetings, and it was excellent. And you've just been so thoughtful about what you bring to the table when you come in, and it's, it's, it's really, I'll miss you.
I have a statement for later, but I'll just say it later.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you all very much.
All right. Enough of the mushy stuff.
Yes.
Public comment. So we're going to move to our first public comment. So in accordance with Scotch Plains Fanwood Public School Bylaws 0164, 0165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comments, maximum three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, and other board business will be heard first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. Speakers, please state your full name and the town in which you reside. Please note, boards use the public comment period as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question-and-answer session or cross-examination between the public and the individual members. Beware that not all issues brought before the board meeting will be resolved that evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his or her designated. With that being said, I will now open up the first 15-minute public comment section. When you come to the mic, please state your name and the town in which you reside.
Yes, it's just me. Hi, my name is Vincent Cucci. I live in Scotch Plains and have the last 19 years. I guess it's on. I'm here to bring to the attention the lack of a JV hockey coach for the Scotch Plains Fanwood High School Ice Hockey Team. I had a whole different speech written up, but just came from Cody and watched our Scotch Plains varsity team have a huge upset win over Mendham, a game we were not supposed to be in. My nephew, Michael LaGleethy, stood on his head in goal and shut the team out. So very exciting. But the entire time I'm watching it, I'm thinking, there's going to be potentially 15 kids next year that don't have that opportunity to put on the team jersey and represent their town and their team in the sport that they love and have persevered in for the last potentially nine, 10 years. Scotch Plains Fanwood had a JV team starting in 1920's season. The first two years, there were enough players to field both a JV and varsity with very minimal crossover. The last two years, it has been light. Next year, we have anywhere from 10 to 12, potentially more, hockey players coming in. We're not talking about kids who want to pick up hockey now that they're, you know, a freshman or, or late, picked up late in life, and we've had that. But real hockey players who dedicated themselves to their primary sport. As many of you may know, hockey has a limited roster. You could only field 20, you could only dress 20. The reality is, even on a varsity team of 20, 18 skaters, maybe 15 to 14 get regular playing time. So some of them are going to be sitting on the bench and just watching anyway. A JV program, a real JV program with a dedicated coach will give those children who don't get regular playing time the opportunity to participate and develop. It'll also give the opportunity for the players who will not make the varsity team at all, and there is going to be a handful of real hockey players next year who just will not have the opportunity to make the varsity team, give them the opportunity to develop. I started a middle school hockey program five years ago. I'm very happy to watch a lot of the kids who came from, came through that program play in that game today and, and succeed and persevere, a couple of which started out playing for the first time on that middle school team. I know that it, the JV coach had been in the budget. It was lost in the budget, probably, you know, understandably. Next year, it's going to be a, a needed resource. I'm just going to finish what I wrote. Without a dedicated junior varsity program at Scotch Plains Fanwood High School, there would not be an opportunity for players who do not make varsity team to regularly get playing time on the varsity team to develop and represent their school and town in their chosen sport. For this reason, I respectfully ask the board to consider re-establishing the JV hockey coach position for the Scotch Plains Fanwood High School year for the '24-'25 season. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cucci.
Carrie Morris, Fanwood, New Jersey. I don't know if you heard, but Westfield just implemented a policy regarding student-led protests. I'm wondering if we should think about doing the same, should that be allowed at all. There's an SPF elementary school teacher that got into a physical altercation at a pro-Palestinian rally with a counter protester in Westfield. If a teacher is unable to protest peacefully, how can we expect our students to behave in a peaceful manner? If a teacher can get into a scuffle on their own time, how do we know that this same teacher, the same teacher will not have a spillover effect into the classroom when they are faced with a student that disagrees with them? I'm sure many of you have heard about the AI photo bullying case in Westfield. I went to the sectional finals boys soccer game in Westfield. I was surprised to hear the SPF student body was chanting the phrase, "She was 14." Really not, not a good look for Scotch Plains exploiting an issue that happened to a 14-year-old girl. I know if I was the parent of that 14-year-old girl, that would have been a really awkward game to be attending. I am not sure, you've heard about this, and, and again, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, but it shows, there was authorities from SPF there that did nothing. I wish I had the guts to say something, but I would have been, you know, berated. I'm not in a position of authority to do so. I'm not going to be doing that. But there are people, you know, athletic directors and people who should be in charge, who should take that opportunity to say something. I'm a firm believer in being proactive about things. I think we should really consider passing a policy that prohibits student-led protests, just as that kind of got out of control. It's kind of a mob mentality. When you get a group of kids together, they can do some silly, dumb things. And so, and that's why I believe, you know, having something, you know, to prohibit student-led protests would be really important. And let's face it, the majority of student-led protests, the protesters are only participating to get out of class. I kind of wish they had more protests when I was in school, because I would have jumped at the opportunity to get out of class. And so it's not, it's not a genuine, organic thing in a lot of instances. It's just kids taking an opportunity to get outside and get some fresh air, and it can lead to confrontation, very awkward confrontational situations. We know that, you know, when it comes to social justice, there's two sides very often to social justice. It's not just a one-sided thing, and I think it's important to keep that in mind, that our kids are here to be going to class and learning, reading, arithmetic, arithmetic, and, and history and everything like that. They're not, they shouldn't be taught to protest.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Does anyone else have a public comment? Seeing no one, I'll close this portion of the public comment. We have another one at the end of the meeting. Letters to the Board is the next section. One email was received by the public and was sent to the appropriate administrator. We'll now move over to committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports? Nancy?
The Community Relations Committee met on December 13th, and we had a good meeting. We were joined by Laura Bishop and Jessica Rayes, and, and Dr. McGary joined us as well. And really, we were talking about, most of the meeting, about the new website that's going to go up related to the referendum. And so we were looking at a draft of that and brainstorming a slogan, and we're really excited about it. I don't know when, it's going up soon.
I believe tonight.
Tonight?
Tonight.
So we, we think people will be pleased, and, and Christopher Jones mentioned the survey. People still can do the survey, I believe, on the website. So I would encourage people to look for that and, and be, it will continuously be updated as there's more information.
Just to tie going to that, Nancy, the, the monthly newsletter will go out tomorrow, and it'll have the link for, for the website.
Okay, great. And also, the superintendent regularly meets with parent liaisons from all the schools, and a number of them shared very exciting things. And from helping hands, visiting the classroom, veterans in the classroom, service learning projects, and Election Day events with actual election booths, Halloween events, and, let's see, at the high school, we had an alum who came playing in an ensemble that was nominated for a Grammy. Was anybody? In any case, that sounded exciting. And just a number of other things. So a lot of really good things going on in the district, and we enjoy every month being lucky enough to hear about these different things that are going on in all the schools. So it was, it was a good meeting.
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody else, any questions? Other committee reports? Nope, okay. Enrollment report, Mr. Jones already went through. We're going to move over to superintendent. You have a couple of items on your list.
So the first is out-of-district placements, and the second is the HIBs from November 30th. And the third is gifts to the school.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Winkler, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Boroff, any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Mast, personnel?
Personnel. So I asked that the board approve the personnel report that was presented in exec this evening.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Kolikowski, Ms. Winkler, do we have any comments or questions? Mr. Jones, please call the roll.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Boroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Winkler?
Yes.
Dr. Kolikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes. Motion carries. Mr. Jones, the move over to board the business functions, the 20 items you have on your list.
Number one is staff training. Number two, related services, special education students. Number three is transportation agreement with another school district for providing transportation for one of our special education students. Again, transportation for special education students through Morris Union Jointure. Number five is environment. So we previously approved the Nettingham Fire Alarm. They're going through, and going through architectural plans, and they're, they are adding additional sensors. And so part of that, as they start and go on the walls, they need to do environmental testing. That is number, number five. Number six is the testing for 330 South Ave that I mentioned previously. Number seven is applying, applying for a preschool grant that we apply for every year, and we get approximately, approximately $50,000 that we get every year. Number eight is the results of a used technology bid for our, our iPads, MacBooks, and such. And something we changed last year, where we, it used to be just one bid for all of these items, but by running four separate bids, we're able to get additional funds to maximize the value of our items. Number nine, library book disposal, theater vendor, tennis theater vendor. That was a change from, last month, we had updated. We had a wrong amount on there in error, so this is updated. Number 11 is a grant, Union County grant, for $2,000 for fall rep theaters. First time we got this, so it goes to the theater group, Wayne Mallett and his team for putting in for this. 12, district truck purchases. So this is right before the pandemic, board-approved purchase of vehicles, and they were canceled due to supply chain issues by the dealership. So it took almost two, almost two, almost three years to get these trucks back in stock, so this just replaces those previous orders that were approved.
That was also known as Amazon bought every truck in the country.
Yes.
We couldn't buy anything.
That's right.
Got it.
Yep. 13, pretty cool, scoreboard donations that are going in with the middle schools. 14, these are just our, part of our standard process. We have, the air conditioning we do have in the school district, the rooftop units have, you know, approximately 20-year life, and we have to replace those over time. So this is this year's order. 15, high-impact tutoring grant. This is through the state. They are, they had leftover SRO III funds from COVID federal legislation, and they decided to put out a grant for tutoring, and this is approving or accepting the, the funding that we got from the state on that. 16, ARP Safe Return Plan. This is a continuation of what we've done every year since COVID, and as long as the federal funding is still open, which it is for another year, for those grants that were passed through legislation, we have to do this every year. And it's posted on our website. 17, fire and security drill report. 18, financial reports. 19, disbursement listings. 20, payment bills. And I just wanted to briefly touch on the enrollment again. I want to repeat this every, every meeting, because it keeps going up. Every failed to mention is that, that when I mention the enrollment to different stakeholders, they often mention the new developments in the town. And I would say, yeah, we're getting, definitely getting students from those. But in addition, our births are, have been increasing since '16, '17. And so I expect the enrollment due to the births to continue for at least the next five years. So just want to make that clear, that the developments are not the full story on the, on the enrollment. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do we have a motion for the board business items?
So moved.
Ms. Mitchell, do we have a second?
Shaggy.
Ms. Boroff, do we have any comments, questions for Mr. Jones on any of the items? Yes, Dr. Kolikowski?
I do. With the student enrollment, you said it is also the births, but from the development at the Bo Craft location, what about the Parker Garden location? Are we getting students from there yet?
Yeah, that's very, very early. There's four buildings open, but they're only a few units. So we only have, I think it's five students, I believe, from that so far.
So the preponderance are coming from the one side?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to board policies. Ms. Winkler?
So these are all policies that we had discussed at previous meetings.
So, these are all policies that we had discussed at previous meetings. We've already gone over them and approved first reading of these policies, just approving second and final approval, so I make a motion to approve the policies as listed on the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Boroff, any comments, questions? No, saying none? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from November 30th, public meeting?
Oh, so moved.
Ms. Winkler?
Second.
Ms. Mitchell, we'll give it to you.
I give it.
Any comments or questions? I know we have to make an amendment to...
I updated it, so it's updated and attached with the instructional update.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Comments or questions? Saying none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to new board business, any new board business? Liaison reports. Garden State?
Do you want to go first?
No, her meeting was private. She didn't allow it at the last meeting. CPAG, CPAG didn't want anybody in.
Oh, okay. Well, Garden State Coalition of Schools met this week on December 20th, and the guest speaker was Dr. Maurice Elias from Rutgers University, who's with SEL for New Jersey. And it was a very good meeting, and following up on, on some of the things that Dr. Mass was talking about, he was talking about the importance of creating a culture of caring, kindness, and helping for, in order for students to be successful and, and be, have positive social and emotional learning. And he talked about the necessity of purpose and inspiring our youth with positive purpose. So, I was thinking, the beginning of 2024, that's a good thing for all of us to be thinking about, is helping our students with positive purpose. And, and I know everyone in the schools is working hard to create that culture of kindness and empathy, helping one another. So, that was very good, and then, in addition, we also talked about things going on in Trenton, as we always do, and there's a lot going on. It's been a very busy lame duck, talking about everything from teacher observations, online education, special education census, many, many different things that are all very consequential. So, if you're reading the information that we get, or any of the public who want to go to the Garden State Coalition website, you can see a lot of what's happening. So, it was a good meeting. The next meeting's January 17th, and for anybody who, it's also going to be Zoom, so it's easy to attend, and it's going to be on AI.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bauer. Any questions for Ms. Bauer on her report?
Good question. Are those meetings open to the public?
I don't think the trustee, the, those meetings are, I don't think so. But I'll ask.
In case you want to keep up.
But, but most of the, most of the information...
You'll have to come to the meetings now to hear what happened at those meetings.
Exactly, exactly.
Most of the information, except the speakers themselves, are really on the website.
Okay.
Amy, you were, and Dr. Mass were there as well, if they had anything they wanted to add.
It was an excellent meeting. He's always excellent, Dr. Elias.
Yeah. Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other liaison reports? No? Okay. Well, we have workshops, any workshops reports requested to attend? Any workshop reports? No? Okay. All right, second public comment section. So, in accordance with Scotch Plains Vanwood Public Billings 0164 and 0165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comment, maximum three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, and other board business will be heard first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. Speakers, please state your full name and the town in which you reside. Please note, boards use the public comment tier as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question-and-answer session or cross-examination between the public and the individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board will be resolved that evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his or her designee. So, now I will open up the second and final public comment section of 2023, so please come forward if you have any public comments that you'd like to make. State your name and the town in which you reside.
I have a new phone, so I just think of technology, man, that's really pathetic. I was wondering if you could address...
Mr. Morris.
Kerry Morris, Vanwood.
Thank you.
You would think I would know that by now, I could memorize something simple like that. I was wondering if you could address the, the building that's being purchased, if you could, after I'm done, tell me or tell us exactly how that would be integrated into our school district? Would it be, you know, fifth and sixth grade for the entire district? How is it, how is it going to be working? I'm just thinking in terms of when my kids were growing up, my wife was shuttling to three different schools. It's really time-consuming, and, you know, it, you know, it's literally over an hour to, to pick up all the kids, and how, what kind of a strain that would be on, on other families that could potentially maybe have to pick up kids from four different schools now? I don't know. And, and again, just, I don't know if those logistics have been worked out yet, but I, you know, just getting the building, it sounds good, but then you're like, well, what do you do with it? And, and so, I'm just wondering at what point that's going to be vetted out and, and talked about. The other thing that's kind of dovetails onto what that gentleman talked about, in case anybody was interested, they just opened two brand-new pickleball courts and a roller. I don't think it's open yet, the roller rink, I think it's going to, I actually saw illegally somebody sneaking over the top and playing, but we won't mention that that actually happened. But that's how much these kids really want to play hockey, is they're sneaking over the, over the top, they're excited about getting it out there and playing hockey. And just as a, as a side note, is a young man that used to attend our church, who lived in Cranford, just got picked up by the Pittsburgh Penguins at the age of 27. And when it comes to hockey, that's really old to finally make it. So, this guy persevered and made it through, and he made it, he made it to the big show. So, there's, there's a lot of cool things that are happening with, with hockey, a lot of, I personally like pickleball, it's a heck of a lot safer, that's why all people play it like me. And if you haven't tried it, I encourage you to try it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any other public comment? Really?
Ethan Murray, Scotch Plains, I just want to wish everyone a safe and happy New Year and happy holidays too.
Thank you. Young man. Any other public comment? It's questionable. All right, so I'm going to close the second and final public comment section of the year for '23, and we're going to move upcoming meetings, so we have the January 4th reorg meeting here at 7:30, and the January 25th regular public meeting, 8:00 PM here as well. We will now move over to the good of the order. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to say for the good of the order?
Yes, I'm going to read it, so I...
I would. Be careful of drop-off, is my first thing. And the second is, I wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to be in this seat, and I'm going to keep it short so I can keep it together. So, thank you for this privilege.
That's it?
I have a lot more to say, but that's...
Say it.
No, no, that's enough.
No, you have to. You've spent time writing it.
Yes.
Do you want us to come back to you?
Just that, that sums it up.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for the good of the order?
On another note, I just wanted, well, obviously, to wish everyone a happy holidays, happy New Year, be safe, be nice, be kind, be healthy, but we are, have our very first Super Sports Saturday on January 6th, that our PTA has worked very hard to launch for the first time with multiple aspects of the day that I could not explain to you, but it was described to me, and it sounds awesome, and so I would definitely check that out on the website, and happy and healthy to everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Boroff. Anyone else? Ms. Bauer?
I just wanted to highlight, I'm not sure everyone who worked on this, but I, I think it's very exciting about the tutoring grant, it was a competitive grant, and a lot of times, somehow, districts like ours are not eligible for these state grants, and so I appreciate the work getting it and the work that's upcoming to implement it, so...
Dr. McGary is a master grant writer.
Yes, so special thanks to him, and best wishes to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Dr. Kulikowski.
Yeah, I think the student reps' report tonight was excellent. I think you're finally in the groove, you had a nice tag team going with each other, and I look forward to hearing more complete reports like that in the future. And Karen, I'm going to miss your level-headedness and comforting words at all of our meetings, exec and public.
Miss you all too. Good luck. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, oh, I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
I wanted to wish my replacements, Nali, all the best. You're in great hands, and this group, it's so refreshing to have all these different lenses come together for the purpose of our students in a healthy way and get to real change. It's a privilege and an honor, and I know you're going to do a great job. Okay, see?
Andrew, you're just a phone call away.
This isn't goodbye, it's see you soon.
And I also want to thank you again, but also, happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas, Christmas is the next coming holiday, and Happy New Year, and have a good break, and see y'all in January.
Remember your positive purpose. Yeah?
Good.
Did you mention the win against Westfield?
I just thought about that. But our girls' basketball team beat Westfield. I don't have an...
Didn't hear you, what did you say?
Our girls' team beat Westfield, and I don't have an exact number, but my friend said it's been over 10 years since we last beat them, so that was definitely an impressive win for our team.
We came back from the beginning. I think we started off a little rocky, but then we picked it up and we brought it home. So, yeah. Looking forward to more of that as the season goes on.
Anyone else for the good of the order? I just want to thank everybody, thank everybody here. Oh, oh, you have more?
Yeah, I just want to say, happy holidays and thank you to Ms. Mitchell.
Good luck. You, you both will be fine. Thank you for being leaders of our community right here.
Anyone else? I just want to thank everybody, thank you everybody for, you know, coming, thanks everybody for everything you guys do, day in and day out. Thank you guys for, you know, taking the time out and, you know, being a part of this, and everybody have a safe and happy holiday season, New Year, and everything else in 2024. Here we come.
Here we come.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Amy, Boroff, and Kerry, Karen Mitchell? Karen Mitchell's going to close us out. Karen Mitchell's going to close us out with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.